I've spoken separately with each of those commissioners regarding requests submitted. I'm not going to get into specifics from each conversation, but will point out that Commissioner Brian O'Connor notified me that he was recusing himself before he was even made aware that there is a request for him to do so. The other commission members have told me that they will not be refusing themselves. The decision to refuse oneself is one that is made solely by the individual commission members. Fellow commission members, the applicant, nor the public can force the commission member to refuse him or herself. However, the failure of commissioners to refuse themselves, if they have the appearance of a conflict, could resolve in court overturning the decision of the zoning commission. I think that the Supreme Court has consistently held the test is not whether conflict interest actually exists, but whether it reasonably might exist. Even the appearance of conflict could undermine public confidence and is against public policy. Courts have gone on to state that personal interests include relationships or vices that impair our impartiality, possess favoritism or hostility towards parties involved in the matter. From a practical standpoint, if any request to debate of a commissioner to refuse themselves from this or any application, the commission member should not debate that request with whoever is making it. They should either simply refuse themselves or elect not to do so. It's not something that should result in a back and forth dialogue as part of public hearing. Let me finish my stating. I think it's great we have so many people here tonight with the application. The more informed residents are regarding the proposal in their town, the better the community can operate. Commission members, you need to remember to keep an open mind and listen to what comes before them during this hearing when ultimately rather than a decision in accordance with these zoning regulations. Thank you all. If at any point during the process of commission would like to request a legal opinion from me on similar matters, I'd be happy to do so. Get your requests through me and I'll provide an opinion in the next evening. Thank you again.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Evan Seaman. I'm a land use lawyer at Robinson &amp; Cole in Hartford. Formally, one request for recusal. The second did not have to be made because Mr. O'Connor agreed not to participate. Without getting into a back and forth with Attorney Lynn McFalter's suggestion, we still want to maintain our objection to Mr. Jalinas, Commissioner Jalinas participating in this proceeding. We did submit a letter earlier today outlining the reasons which we believe his participation has created the appearance of inferiority. The test under the law is not an actual conflict or pre-determination, but the creation of an appearance of inferiority. And I'll leave it at that. We'd like to move on with our presentation. Our reasons are stated in our letter. On that matter, that's all I have to say. We maintain our continuing objection to Commissioner Jalinas's participation. And now I'd like to proceed with our presentation.
I'm sorry, Chief of Order. I'd like to make a motion to take brief recess so that the funding and zoning commission can move into executive session to discuss with its membership possible recusal.
I'm not making a motion.
Briefly move into executive session for the purpose of determining, discussing the commissioners, whether or not it would be appropriate for one or more of them to refuse themselves. That's a motion I make.
I'll second it. Bring anything in favor.
Aye.
Close.
Tom, I have order that I'm north south went to, but this unfortunately had to be posted as a special meeting, which we can't add to the agenda. You're adding executive session to the agenda.
Well, we're taking a brief recess. And I rephrase my motion. I make a motion that we take a brief recess.
I'd just like to introduce the team members joining us this evening. I hear from them. First, Holden Sabato, one of the applicant. Tim Poole, the civil engineer for the project. Peter Smith, the architect. Donnell Scott, the economic consultant in land use analysis. And finally, I don't believe he's here yet. He's coming from another meeting, but Scott Hesketh is our traffic engineer, and he's joining us this evening as well. So this is an application for a special permit to develop two parcels, the ones identified in the legal notice that you just read, Mr. Cameron. The two parcels to be developed, map block lot 1711, 1711-16, the proposed uses warehouse distribution, as well as light manufacturing with parking related improvements. We have here before the wetlands agency this summer obtained a permit to conduct regulated activities on August 6th, a couple months ago. So this property in the surrounding area, the larger parcel, about 129, 30 acres, Commerce Park Transitional Zone, the smaller parcel, Commerce Park A zoning district, the property has been zoned for industrial use for decades. It's proximate to Route 20 and I-91. It's surrounded by industrial and commercial uses, including distribution centers to the east on Connecticut South Drive and Gateway Boulevard, as well as to the north. Around the airport is about 5,000 feet to the east. West of the site are some homes and high school. A little further west is a quarry. Southwest of the site is a gun shooting range. So a little bit of the history of this property, I think, would be helpful for the commission members, the public and our team. This property is an important one for the town. It's also an important property for the applicant. Your 2014 POCD plan of conservation and development identifies this property and says that the owner and the town should work together to put the best use possible there. And that's what we've been doing. That's what the applicant has been doing for the past five plus years. All along, since 2005, the Commerce Park Transitional Zone has allowed warehouse and distribution uses, and it's also about light manufacturing uses. In approximately 2019, early 2020, this commission was in the process of rezoning the larger parcel from Commerce Park Gate to Commerce Park Transition. And as part of the hearing process at that time, the Silverman Group appeared, informed the commission that it was in negotiation to purchase the property and wanted to develop warehouse and distribution on that property. And during the course of that hearing, they showed a concept plan for a large warehouse, 1.2 million square feet. The commission said that's too big. And the property, that was just a concept plan. So this was not the Silverman Group's application. That was just the concept plan. And the commission rezoned the property. A couple of years later, April 2022, the applicant submitted a text amendment application to actually increase the size of warehouse and distribution buildings and light manufacturing buildings up to 400,000 square feet. The commission approved that application. It unanimously approved that application. And as part of the hearing process, the Silverman Group, the applicant, made clear that it would move forward, or it sought to move forward with multiple smaller buildings at that time up to 400,000 square feet. A couple of months later, September 2022, the commission reviewed another text amendment application of the applicant, this time to increase from 400,000 square feet to 800,000 square feet, the size of warehouse and distribution facilities. The application was denied in a 3-3 tie.
I'm sorry, hold on just a second.
Yes, please.
I just thought of who first. 2022, you said there was a text amendment application. Wasn't that from the commission? Or was that from the applicant?
That was from the applicant.
That was from the applicant?
Yes.
And then in 2023, the proposal to increase to 600,000? That was from the applicant also?
I believe in September 2022 was actually to increase to 800,000 square feet. And that was from the applicant.
That's been this from staff?
Yes.
Staff's letter. So that should be 800?
Yes. And that application was, as part of that application process, the applicant expressed a desire to build a larger warehouse and distribution facility up to 300,000 square feet. And that application was denied in a 3-3 tie. And members of the commission and the public expressed that two smaller buildings would be appropriate. And just last year, 2024.
I'm sorry, comment there about the commission?
Yes. During the public hearing process, members of the commission and members of the public expressed that.
Some members of the commission. Some members. Thank you.
Okay. And last year, in 2024, the commission, this time it was the commission's application, changed warehouse and distribution and light manufacturing uses from site plan approval to special permit approval. And the important thing to point out is all along, these uses have been allowed. They've been allowed in the Commerce Park Transitional Zone. If the commission did believe that those uses were appropriate for the Commerce Park Transitional Zone, it could have eliminated them from the zoning regulations. It could have said that these uses are prohibited. But it didn't do that. Instead, it allowed those uses to continue, and it allowed those uses to continue in buildings above 400,000 square feet, consistent with this commission's earlier approval of the applicant's text amendment application. And that reflects a policy decision of the commission. It shows that the commission has decided, as a matter of policy, that uses manufacturing, light manufacturing, warehouse and distribution uses on that scale up to 400,000 square feet are appropriate for the Commerce Park Transitional Zone. And that's an important point. So this is back and forth with the commission through informal and formal review processes, concept plans, et cetera, brings us here today, listening to the comments of the commission, some members of the commission, the applicant, and some members of the public. The applicant is now proposing two smaller industrial buildings, one 400,000 square feet, one 300,000 square The uses expressly allowed. This is not an application for variances. This back and forth with the zoning board of appeals. The applicant is not seeking a use variance. The applicant is not seeking dimensional variances. The project complies with the zoning requirements. This is not a rezon application. That's already been done. The property is already zoned to permit these uses. And then finally, this is not an application for a text amendment. That's already been before the commission, and the commission again unanimously approved the applicant's earlier application for a text amendment to increase the size of warehouse and distribution uses and light manufacturing uses up to 400,000 square feet. So this is a development application seeking approval of uses that are expressly allowed by your zoning regulations. And as you'll see from our presentation this evening and our team of consultants, we need to receive all applicable zoning requirements. Again, very large parcel, 133 acres. The proposed structure is compliant with all bulk area density and setback requirements. It's, the proposed uses consistent with other commercial industrial uses in the area. 65% of purpose coverage is allowed. Only 28% is of his propose. Only 40% total listed area is required. 71% is proposed. Robust landscaping, a variety of shady trees, screen plantings, access drives. There's a bit east of the property. They go through the commercial and industrial areas that I just mentioned earlier, away from the eastern part of the site, not near any residences. Loading docks strategically located to the east, away from the residences. This is consistent with your zoning regulations. It's consistent with your plan of conservation and development. And this is not an application or a project that was haphazardly designed and put together. We've taken time in the past five years to work with the commission, the public, and submit this proposal to you this evening. The applicant's listened to the commission's comments and members of the public. 1.2 million square feet is too big. 800,000 square feet, a single building is too big. But multiple buildings of up to 400,000 square feet, those are okay. Those are allowed. And now the applicant, as part of this application, is expressing his right as a property owner to move forward with a permitted use under the zoning regulations. I'd like to now ask for...
Sorry, could I just...
Yes, please.
Yeah. We're moving for a special permit approval. And then the question that we come to the Section 5, G4, special review area, does that come into play here because of the proximity to residential zone?
Is that the one requiring a special permit? Or is that the different one that you're referencing here?
Yes, that is taken into consideration on their zoning table of the differing differences that are putting the residential zoning district versus non-residential.
Okay. So you mention that in any of the documents that you've submitted here?
I don't know if it's expressly referenced in the narrative. It should be a part of the site plan.
At some point, I'm going to request that it be read into the record, but... Section 5, G4, special review area that entails the people are wearing, because it's not mentioned in the...
Is that the one requiring up to 200 feet of loading area? Okay. Yeah, we'll be prepared to respond to that.
Other additional criteria that the commission can't consider, again, because of the proximity to residential zoning, there's what we call the special review area under Terminal 5, G4, the East Grand B Plan. So that needs to be addressed as part of the special permit that the applicant is going to take.
Yes. And it has been addressed and will be addressed in our presentation. So with that brief introduction, I'd like to now ask Holden Sabato and the applicant to come and introduce the applicant and the property.
Good evening, Mr. Cameron, members of the commission. It's nice to see some familiar faces here tonight. I've been in front here for, I think, four, five years now. So I'll be brief. I heard something. I don't really think it's worth it to read it right now. There's obviously a lot of concerns about this application. I get that. You know, I think people like to think that we like to plop a building on a property and then just hope that it works. It's not how we're doing. We can't do it like that. We, as I say, we closed on this property in July of 2021. We purchased the property knowing there was no zone for industrial. We knew we wanted to build it up here. We have worked through multiple administrations in the town to address many different concerns about this project. This application is a culmination of basically everything we could do to assess those concerns. Not everything's going to be perfect. We did, you know, we responded to any concerns as best as we could and think this is a frankly very strong application. I know there will be, you know, many questions that come up from the commission and the public, and, you know, our team of professionals will answer that. I just ask you, please do listen to our professionals. They obviously have a sense of experience in their fields. They are professionals. They are bound to tell you the facts of this application. I know it's an election year, and I think that this application has become highly politicized. And I think that's, you know, dangerous in multiple ways. One way being that we could lose sight of the facts of the project and the application. Please don't let this become more political than it already has been. Listen to our professionals. We're here to answer the questions. We're here to answer the concerns. We've spent 40 years coming up with this site plan, and, you know, we're excited to present it to you tonight. So thank you for having us. Move forward to the rest of this hearing and the rest of this And Tim Poole with BL.
Good evening. My name is Tim Poole, civil engineer with BL Companies and the engineer record for this project. Robin, if you could advance to... One more?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I am here tonight to discuss, as mentioned, the art engineering, the site design for this project, starting with existing conditions. The plan that we have in front of you on the screen shows the site location outlined in red. It does show the proposed development area totaling approximately 133 acres across both parcels subject to this application, as well as highlighting kind of the surrounding areas. A lot of the text notes, a little hard to read, but those outline the majority of the commercial properties in the Commerce Park area between the site and the airport, as well as highlighting the airport as well, and as well as some of the relationship between the commercial area in Eastern B, as well as the very northern edge of Windsor. So in total, as I mentioned, two total parcels, 133 acres, plus and minus. This site has frontage on several streets, including Rainbow Road, School Street, Connecticut South Drive, and Gateway Boulevard. Currently, the lots are vacant and primarily wooded. There is a little bit of a clearing kind of in the north central area of the property. And there is also some existing utility infrastructure running through the site, mainly consisting of a public water main and public sewer main, and a small sanitary sewer fourth pump house. The site currently is bordered by Sheldon's Brook to the west, School Street, Rainbow Road, Cumberland Farms, Shopping Plaza to the north and northeast. Businesses, various commercial industries, as are labeled on here, again, I know it's a little hard to read, but quite a few commercial properties along Gateway Boulevard and Connecticut South Drive to the east, and vacant land to the south. As mentioned, we were approved from the Illand Wetlands Commission for regulated activity. The main wetland resource areas are Sheldon's Brook with bordering vegetated wetlands along the western side of the property. And then there's also an unnamed stream and pond with bordering vegetated wetlands running along the eastern edge of the property as well. There are noted flood zones on the property, however, it's fairly limited. There is a flood zone A along Sheldon's Brook. The zone more or less is confined to the main flow path of the Brook itself. It does clip the edge of the property, but it does not come up into the main development area of the project. So the plan up on the screen now is a colored plan showing the proposed development. This did rotate the view a bit, so north in this view is actually to the right. We have Rainbow Road kind of diagonally on the bottom right corner of the screen. Sheldon's Brook is along the top edge of the colored view, and Connecticut South Drive and Gateway Boulevard are down at the south central portion of the plan view here. So as mentioned, the proposed conditions include two total buildings, 400,000 square foot building, which is the building to the plan left labeled as Building A in our application. That building is proposed to be all warehouse use. Building B, which is the building on the plan right, is 300,000 square feet with a mix of primarily warehouse with up to 125,000 square feet being used as light manufacturing. Both of these buildings will be single story, commercial industrial uses, as mentioned, with fire suppression system. We will go into a little bit more on the architecture in a few minutes. Continuing forward with the site, as mentioned, the proposed site is designed in accordance with all of the various bulk zoning regulations. Building setbacks, minimum front yard, side yard, and rear yard are well in excess of the required setbacks. Specifically with the setbacks adjacent to residential zones, we do have a noted minimum of 100 feet with up to 200 feet maybe required. However, the commission can take into consideration other factors such as the existence of or retention of existing vegetation. It should be noted that our project, we did strategically locate and design this site to maintain as much of the existing vegetation as possible around the site. The main criteria for this was twofold. One, to be as sensitive as possible to the surrounding uses of the residences and the school to the, to the west, which is the plan north again, as well as minimize any potential impacts to wetlands, which again was before it when Wetlands Commissioned. But we do have very minimal impacts to any upwind review areas along that western side of the property. So much of that existing vegetation is remaining along that property line. It's essentially limited to, if you can see the two kind of triangle shaped bubbles on the top side of the plan, those are our proposed stormwater management basins. Those do provide additional buffer. That's the farthest that our tree clearing goes towards the residences to the west of us. And then the clearing for the area around Building A is kept very tight to the truck circulation and parking lot. In terms of maximum lot coverage, the zoning does allow up to 65%. And as previously mentioned, we are well below that requirement here with a total of 28% proposed. For parking, the main driver here was the split of light manufacturing and warehouse between the 125,000 square feet of manufacturing, which is parking calvis, two spaces per thousand square feet, and warehousing, which is a requirement of half a space per thousand square feet. The total required parking spaces comes out to 538. We are proposing 542 total parking spaces. So we do comply with the parking regulations. Parking stalls are all compliant as well with stalls meeting the requirement of 9 by 18. Drive aisles on site for passenger car circulation areas are all minimum 24 feet wide, two-way traffic flow, again, meeting the requirements. There are some areas that are a little bit wider, primarily areas that are either mixed use between passenger cars or, and truck traffic, or it's specific to truck circulation areas. Namely, those truck circulation areas are the east and west sides of Building A and the east side of Building B, as well as the main access drives. Those truck circulation areas around both sides of Building A and the east side of Building B are wider at about 60 feet so that trucks can safely maneuver into the loading dock area and back up either into loading docks or trailer parking stalls. And as I mentioned, between trailer parking and loading dock stalls, we do have approximately 116 trailer parking stalls for Building A, again, the larger 400,000 square foot building, and 71 trailer stalls for Building B, the 300,000 square foot building. Those were strategically located to minimize any potential parking for trucks, trailers, things of that nature, towards the residential area. If you notice, Building B, which is the building that does abut the residential zones, there is no trailer parking, no loading docks on the western side. All of that activity was strategically located to the east side to keep any truck traffic, any noise, anything of that nature, away from the residences as far as possible, and utilize the building, the existing vegetation, the stormwater basins, the proposed vegetation, and the grading all as a buffer and screen for the residential neighborhood to the west of us.
I'm sorry, could you show that? Could you...
Sure. Yeah. So Building B, this is the smaller building. The area here on this east side of the building, which is a plan's outside, this is the trunk port area for Building B. All this kind of light brown or yellowy color here is the loading dock stalls. There's, I know it's hard to see, there's some strapping down here for the trailer parking stalls as well. All of that trunk port activity was strategically located on this east side of the building so that the building itself, the existing slope, so proposed vegetation, the stormwater basins, and then the existing vegetation up here on the western side can all be used as a buffer or screen from the residential properties which are further to the west.
And then Building A?
Building A, we do propose this one to have a cross dock configuration. So there are loading docks on both sides. Again, the loading dock stalls are kind of this yellowy-brown color. Again, the loading dock stalls are kind of this yellowy-brown color here. There's trailer parking stalls also on both sides. And this area, we did strategically locate this building farther south on the site so that it does not directly abut the residential uses. This is a school here, but it does not fall within the residential zone. So we did want to locate this as far south on the property to keep the loading dock and trailer parking as far away from residents as possible.
At which point does the property, that's A zone, I believe, property to the west, that's A zone property, at what point is it no longer the Town of East Granby property? And what, at what point does this become property of, I believe, Attorney Mike Rice?
Yes, I believe the property line...
Just run me, I got that one, I know right where we are. If you could just run me from your finger to the furthest south portion, southwest portion of the border. Yeah?
So I know this area here, as you mentioned, this is kind of the property line here for the town property. I know this is the school property. There is a property line here. I do not recall who the landowner is here.
Right, and that is Zone A, correct?
Yes.
So the question then becomes the, that portion that's not the Town of East Granby, it would be the eastern portion of Mr. Rice's property, what's the separation or the distance between that property line zone residential and disturbance here?
I'm sorry, which, which corner?
Right up, keep going up with your hand, not from the corner, coming over, just right there, right in the middle of that. I don't know what the lot number is, so I apologize.
Okay.
I know whose it is. Put your hand right in the middle of that lot, it's not the town lot.
This one?
Nope, coming over, right that lot. Yep. So the question is from that eastern property line to the loading dock and parking area and unloading area, what's the separation distance?
I'll give you one second.
That's the question. I'm sorry, it took me a while with that.
No problem.
It's hard when things aren't facing north-south.
Yes. I will have to double check on that, I'll get back to you. I know at the absolute tightest location, we have about 145 feet from the property line to the building, but that is, that is not in that corner, that's a little farther in.
Is that more property line like where between the two buildings?
Yeah, that's more in this area here.
And that's 145?
I think 145.
The report says 161. It's close enough, but...
We'll double check on that.
I need to consider, not for the town property, but I can understand that, it waived that minimum distance, but I'm concerned about the zone, the residence with Zone A, and concerned about the distance from that boundary to the boats. Just call up disturbance construction.
Sure. For context, just for a little bit of scale, these trailer parking stalls are about 60 feet long, so we're approaching the neighborhood around 100 feet or so from the edge of the parking towards this property here. We'll have to circle back and get you an exact number on that. Continuing forward, we do have, as mentioned, two main site accessways. Those are extending off the bottom side of the plan here towards the east and directly towards Gateway Boulevard and Connecticut South Drive. Those two driveways are intended to serve the total site, but they are strategically located, again, to be towards the east to force all traffic, trucks and passenger cars through the commercial area out to Route 20. Both driveways are going to be largely new curb cuts. However, the northernmost driveway, which is the plan right of the two, there is an existing dirt road, if you will, it's very overgrown at this point, but that's where the existing water and sewer comes through the site. That was up there a handful of months ago, it's very overgrown at this point, but we are reusing that existing pathway for one of the driveways. There's an existing culvert there through the wetlands. We're trying to use as much of that as possible so that it comes down again through that commercial area and forces all of the traffic out through Gateway Boulevard and Connecticut South Drive. For utilities, we are proposing all new services, some of which will connect in on-site. Again, as mentioned, there's water and sewer both on-site. We are proposing to connect into those. There is adequate supply or availability of utilities.
Where, where are the utilities are coming up from and to?
Sure. So the water and sewer comes in off of Connecticut South Drive down to this location down here. It runs up the existing driveway through this area here, and then, I know it's hard to see, there's kind of a gray rectangle up here. This is where the sanitary sewer pump station is.
Pump station?
Yes, that's the pump station. So the utilities will come up through here, it kind of takes a curve towards the north, and then it follows an arch path that comes through here. There's sanitary and then some limited electric to power the pump station that goes off in this direction. And there is also sanitary water coming through this section tying into School Street. So there's the gravity feed, I believe it's gravity coming in, and then the pump goes out in this direction.
And that current line that you were following where it goes out towards School Street, that's not a road, that's just...
Correct, there's, there's no road there. There's a utilities meant for that way, yes. There is a gravel access road that comes in more or less along this way. That is proposed to remain for access maintenance of the utilities, but there is no proposed connection here for the development along this northern edge. If you know, our proposed pavement edge comes down and around this side through here, there's no proposed connections, no proposed driveways along this side. We will maintain, again, the access for the utility, but there's no proposed access for the development. For fire specifically, we are proposing to do a loop around the whole site. We will coordinate with the fire department as we get a little further along to locate hydrants strategically where they would like them, especially in coordination with the mechanical design for the building so that they have hydrants located in close proximity to the fire department connections. We also are proposing to bring in both gas and electric and teledata services. Gas does, gas will, gas will be connected out towards School Street. We had initial coordination with the utility provider there, and they informed us that School Street is their preferred location due to their capacity and pressure being much more suitable out to School Street. So that's actually one of the...
Oh, is it?
Yes, that's, the darker lines through here is actually our proposed gas service coming out. The gray, again, I know it's hard to read, but the gray lines is more of that existing utility infrastructure enhancement, but we are proposing to bring the gas out to School Street. The electric telecommunications will connect out to Connecticut South Drive underground through the southern or plan left of the two proposed driveways. Again, all underground, but we did coordinate with the electric company as well. That is their preferred location for electric as well. They have much more capacity for their system, their infrastructure going out through the commercial zone.
Both buildings will be served for 48 volt service?
Yes, both will be 48 volt service. And they will each have their own separate transformers, yes. For stormwater design, we do have a full comprehensive system serving the entire site. Overall, all runoff areas from paved surfaces and surrounding grass areas of the core development will be collected in deep sump and flooded catch basins for capture and initial pretreatment. That will flow through the underground pipe network into one of five different stormwater management basins, four of which have sediment four bays built in. We did specifically put in sediment four bays here at the request of Town Engineer Tom Vimaldi. We originally had hydrodynamic separators for pretreatment. Mr. Vimaldi recommended we switch to sediment four bays to provide a higher capacity and a little bit better treatment and green LID infrastructure, so we did make that switch during the inland wetlands application process. And after kind of the initial treatment in the catch basins and the sediment four bays, stormwater will be infiltrating through, again, the five different stormwater management basins, I can kind of point to them here. We have two on this western side, and then we have three on the eastern side. There's a small one down for the new southern driveway. And then we have two larger basins here, more on the northern side of the development, that handle kind of this eastern side of the development as well as the proposed driveway. So in total, the stormwater system will be comprehensive for the development. All areas around the building, including loading, trailer parking, truck circulation, passenger car parking areas, and the buildings themselves, will be captured, sent through the underground pipe network and into the stormwater basins for treatment and infiltration. There are no areas of the proposed development that are directly discharged without pretreatment. There are two isolated areas that are captured, treated in hydrodynamic separators, and discharged not to one of those basins. And it's really isolated to the proposed driveways largely because minimizing the impacts of the wetlands. So we do have a couple of catch basins for the southern drive, or sorry, the northern driveway here that we were not able to pipe back to a stormwater basin due to elevation, so we're proposing hydrodynamic separators to pretreat and achieve the required treatment level for the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual before discharging towards the wetland resource area. And then similar on this side, we have a couple of catch basins that are, these are actually piped through and into the stormwater basin here for infiltration before...
Those will only be runoff from the driveway that's now running down?
Correct, yes. The couple of catch basins here that are treated in hydrodynamic separators and discharged to the Brook here, and these couple that discharged into the basin, that's only from the driveway. Everything from the heart of the development, the parking, the circulation, the buildings themselves, all of this runoff does go into the sediment four bays and the infiltration basins, the four main infiltration basins.
Underground?
Those basins are surface basins, but it's charged...
Leaders from the roofs, the bulk roofs, leaders from the roofs, put down, underground into the basin?
Correct, yes. All stormwater, once it's, from the point of capture, everything is all piped underground. Roof leaders are piped right up the building, go underground and out towards the basins, and then the catch basins are immediate capture and piped underground. There are no proposed surface flow measures at all, no swales, things of that nature. We wanted to capture that water, get it underground as quickly as possible to minimize the development footprint. Our main priority here was to minimize how much disturbance we have on the existing vegetation to maintain as much of that as possible for a screen to surrounding uses. So in total, the stormwater management system as a whole results in a net decrease in all peak discharge rates towards all various runoff locations. We did analyze five different locations, kind of broken down into key areas, to the Sheldon's Brook system, to the, it's the plan north view here. And then there were several points that we analyzed along the eastern side or the plan south here. All of those locations will experience a net decrease in stormwater discharge rates in all design storms. Again, the stormwater was thoroughly reviewed as part of wetlands. We did have a handful of review conditions from Mr. Vimaldi that we did address. He has signed off on that as part of the inland wetlands application. We do also have a site lighting system on the proposed project, largely focused around the proposed building. However, we do have lighting going down the driveways to provide safe light levels for associates and trucks entering and leaving the site. The maximum foot candles on the site lighting system is approximately 4.5. The main target is to keep the core of the site to about 0.5 foot candles, which is the generally accepted minimum for site safety and security. Our overall site does comply with that, provide minimum site lighting for safety and security. Of note, there is no spillage across the property lines. And we also have a proposed landscaping system. Again, the main goal here was to retain as much of the existing vegetation as possible. So on this view here, the colors of, the darker green are the existing wetland resource areas. As you can see, all of those are largely undisturbed. The lighter green are the proposed green space landscaped areas or existing vegetation being remained, to be retained. So some of the larger areas, we have a large swath coming across to separate between the wetland resource area and the proposed development, a minimum of 100 feet wide all the way across through here, which is the upland review zone. There's, again, a swath coming around this side, and then there's a large swath of existing vegetation being remained on this eastern side coming through around the two driveways, but there's a large swath coming through in these three locations. And then through the northern edge of the property, the vast majority of that will remain as well.
Wait, I do have a question. Can you outline the boundary of Sheldon, Sheldon's Brook?
So the boundary of Sheldon's Brook is, it flows through kind of this area in here. The boundary between Sheldon's Brook and the flag wetland line itself, it varies a little bit. Some portions, the boundary of the green space, which is the flag wetlands, is very tight to the edge of Sheldon's Brook where the gray picks up rapidly. In other sections, where the edge of Sheldon's Brook is kind of flat for a little while, there is a vegetated wetland next to that before the gray picks up. So the Brook does kind of meander through that a little bit, but the darker green there is the boundary of the flag wetlands themselves. And it is worth noting too, since you mentioned Sheldon's Brook, that is where the noted flood zone is, it's around Sheldon's Brook itself. It does not encroach farther into the site than that wetland resource area, which is largely tied to the location where the slope kind of picks up from the flatter level at the Brook and the wetlands up towards the site. There is a sizable gray change from the Brook up at the heart of the site. So jumping back to the landscaping, again, we retain as much of the existing vegetation as possible, especially around the perimeter. We do have approximately 250 proposed trees as part of the development, a mix of shade and evergreens strategically placed to provide, you know, evergreens in areas that are more sensitive for screening, and shade trees in areas closer to large parking areas to provide some visual screening certainly, but also provide more of that shading effect.
Do you have that shade that you can show now?
Actually, I don't have that here on the slide. That is, and I see you have the plan set up, it wasn't in there, it's the L series sheets, so it's towards the back. And then inside this site, we do have a few different seed mixes proposed, a lawn seed mix in areas close to the building. There is a specific seed mix for stormwater basins, in the basins themselves, that provide the seed mix that is much more hardy and favorable for a wet foot condition so that they maintain that viability as the basins fill up and drain down. And then we are proposing a conservation seed mix on slopes and disturbed areas away from the building. Those areas are more, there's a mix of various species in there and generally... Those areas are more, there's a mix of various species in there and generally those areas are mowed much less often. It's maybe mowed once or twice a year, mainly to keep down any invasives or large tree growths from encroaching onto critical areas like retaining walls or driveways, but to allow the growth and development of more wildlife-friendly species. So with that, I'll pass it to Peter to...
Yes, I have one, one or two, just one, just to start. You mentioned that the site flows from elevation 282 to 172, 282 in the southern portion, which would be to everybody's left. And then 170, 172 to the north. So, and then it talks about pro constructional and earthwork to create a level building that's safe. The question is, what elevation would that be?
So I know there, I don't recall the exact elevation off the top of my head. I know...
Question of how much we're clearing, how much we're leveling, what we're doing. Are we bringing existing building site to bring up from the north and are we, or are we just going down to 172?
Sure. So ours would be quite a dig from, so. Yes. The finished floor elevation is proposed at around, I believe its elevation is 208. So as you mentioned, kind of the peak elevation was the 270-ish range. Here on this, the southern end of the site, there is an existing ridge line that comes through and the low elevation is around 170 up in the northwest corner. The building pad will be lowered to approximately 208 or so and get four feet down for loading docks, but that's largely a net cut. The site as a whole is a net cut. There shouldn't be very minimal earthwork or import coming in. It would largely just be the required base for paving. The vast majority of it will be cut on site, will use as much of the existing site material as possible to develop that flat building pad and the remainder will be exported.
Some of it is above the 280 and some of it's below the 280?
Yes. Yes. So through the center of the site and this area is the main net cut. There are some small areas around the perimeter on this, on the perimeter of building A that are a slight fill. As we get into roughly this area here, there is a net fill coming across the western side. Certainly a net fills we come in through here and then there is a net fill on this, on the eastern side as well to create the flat pad. The main center portion of building B, there is some fill through here, but not as much. It's mainly to kind of spread.
So to be able to take everything that you're cutting from building A and then you've got it over?
Yes. Yes, we did have a thorough geotechnical investigation on the site. We actually had two different geotechnical engineers look at it and perform moreings. They both agree that we should be able to reuse the existing materials here to create that level pad.
Do we have sheet DN0? It shows everything you just said.
DN0?
Yes, the overall demolition plan. Show them demolition, showing existing elevations, where they're located and how they're situated.
I do not have that in the presentation here. Obviously, if you know, that would say nothing, it's a mention up there. Yeah, I apologize.
The next question, would be cuts? Were there bedrock? Bedrock? Depth or what are you blasting going on?
So the forums that we performed were 60 plus feet in depth. They did not encounter bedrock at all down to 60 feet. So there shouldn't be no blasting at all. Any further questions before I pass to architecture?
Would be using any of the materials to be burning? Were the tree lines going to hold a new tree line?
So there, we do have the proposed grading. It will be largely a fill kind of along that western and eastern sides. We are creating a flat plateau out of that between the top of the fill section and the limits of paving. So we are kind of extending that a little bit to provide a flat plateau to put shade trees and other plantings in so we can have some of that screening along the edge.
What would the slab be looking at?
So proposed slab is approximately 208. Yes, both are the same.
So would you photograph it, it just looks more to the west?
Yes, so the high point is down to the south, which is the planned left here, B. I believe the high point is somewhere in this area on building A. The ridge line, the main ridge kind of runs through in this direction here with the grade gradually dropping off to the north and more sharply dropping off to the east and west. If there's no further questions, I'll pass it to Peter from our team to discuss architecture. So we did actually perform, prepare a couple of renderings on this site specifically showing some view lines for the proposed development. As you can see, this is kind of looking, it's an aerial view. We are elevated quite a bit above the neighborhood, but Route 20 is along the very bottom edge of the screen here. We do have the commercial development in the foreground here, the existing building at the corner of Route 20 and Gateway Boulevard, looking towards the proposed development. Again, trying to highlight the volume of retained vegetation that we have. This is again, kind of an elevated view. We are well above the treetops, so the exact height, I'm not entirely sure, about 100 feet or so in the air at this point. And you can see the sightlines really are pretty well blocked from Route 20 looking towards the development, especially as you look down.
These are the buildings in the back, right?
Yes, these are the two buildings here. So this is, this building A, this is the larger building, 400,000 square feet. That is almost entirely screened even in this elevated view here where we're well above ground level. And this is building B, which is the smaller building. And even still, at this elevated level, it's still screened a good amount, but again, we're 100 feet plus in the air at this view. So we can jump to the next slide. So this is similarly, we started with the Google 3 view here and just showing at street level, looking up the building itself here, again, the same intersection we're standing in Route 20 at this point. Gateway Boulevard is off-screen to the left a little bit. With the existing trees there, the development will not be visible from Route 20 due to the existing vegetation and that separation distance. Be good to that. So this is looking from the, from the west side, looking into the proposed development. Again, we're elevated, we're above treetop level here. But you can see the residential properties here in the foreground. So we do have the handful of residential properties here, the existing tree line that's there today all being retained. And you can see in the back, just the very corner of it, you can see building A, again, the larger building, even at this elevated view, it is almost entirely screened from the residential properties. And then we have building B here, which again, is a smaller building, even at this elevated view, the vast majority of it is screened, certainly as we drop down lower, more of that is screened by the existing vegetation. And this final view is at street level, again, showing, looking from the residential properties off towards the development, there's nothing visible, again, largely due to the retention of that existing vegetation and the sightlines that we're at from street elevation.
One street is the Sanford Bridge.
You're going to have your opportunity for questions and comments.
Yeah, this view is looking from Sanford Bridge, looking towards the east, towards With that, I will pass it to Peter to discuss architecture.
I do have one question, just one question. Would you guys be provided, first from you from like the school, for example, just to see what that looks like? Just so we could see like what vegetation exists between this school and that property? Just to see if it's covered.
Yeah, that's something we...
That'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Peter Smith. I'm with Crosskey Architects, 750 Main Street, Hartford. We are the project architect and I'll speak briefly to the architectural components of the proposed development. So here we have a floor plan of building A, that's the 400,000 square foot building. It's in a cross dock configuration with loading docks on each of the two long sides. The entrances are on the corners. There's four entrances on the corners of the short sides. And below it, under the floor plan, you can see an overall elevation of the typical dock wall. Next slide. Here's the floor plan of building B. This is the 300,000 square foot building. As you can see, it's loading docks along the one side there, the east side. The west side contains the primary entrances, two corner entrances and one center entrance. That elevation on the bottom is the west entrance side.
I'm sorry, do we have this report, Bob?
This is in, I think, the written document, which was like the summary document. It's not in the overall big plans.
Yeah, it should have been. It's hard for me to follow along with what's up there.
On this slide, we're showing the overall exterior elevations at a little bit larger of a scale. To note, the aesthetic is consistent with other buildings of the same typology in the immediate area, although it is providing a bit of an elevated look by the use of premium materials like the architectural concrete wall panels and the storefront framing and glazing on the corners. Here we see some building sections, which are kind of hard to read on the screen, but the buildings will be conventional steel framed, columns, joist curters and bar joists. The exterior walls are insulated concrete panels. Both buildings have an interior clear height of 36 feet and the maximum highest wall of average grade is 49 feet 6 inches, complying with the zoning regulations.
I'm sorry, can you give me the section of the zoning regulations that would permit that? Bobby, could you shed light on that?
The height?
Yeah.
The height was increased after the Village Center master plan.
Right.
On recommendations during that.
So our website has not been updated? Our regulations have not been updated?
I was gonna say about data.
Show me where, what the, I don't know what the building height is, so I'd like to see the section of the regulations that talks about building. I'm on the impression it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 feet, so.
I think that was after the Village Center.
I don't know what it is. I'd like to be told.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so the goal was to stay under the 50 feet. Here we're just showing some enlarged exterior elevation views, showing the color scheme and both the corner entrance and the center entrance along with the storefront framing and glazing. And here is an enlarged view of the dock wall rear corners, showing, you know, what it would look like from the dock position. Each building has four ground level drive indoors and then the associated dock doors. And that includes the architectural portion of the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Donald Poland. I'm with the firm of Goodyear Property Advisors based in East Arctic, Connecticut. I'm actually giving multiple presentations here tonight related to different aspects of this application. The first section, as you go to the next slide, is going to confront the issue of property value impacts. And this is in relationship to, even though I'll be presenting on the special permit considerations later on, this section is directly related to, I believe, four out of the 11 special permit threats herein, probably a reference to property value impacts. So, next slide. In the world of land use, we have commonly heard of what's referred to as "lulu's," or locally undesirable land uses. Historically, these have been the most intensive uses, things like airports having a distributed landfill, refineries and so forth. Over the course of my career, over the past 30 years, we've watched the land use process become more contentious and the fact is, I would say, most uses have become locally unwanted land uses. So today, everything from rezile to mixed use to distribution manufacturing, and even multifamily, when I would even say, you know, I've been yelled at for duplexing this, everything has become something of a proposition. There is a foundational concept within zoning that such regulations shall be made with reasonable consideration to the character of a district with a view to conserving the value of buildings. And that goes back to the early 1920s and the zoning enabling legislation. It was partly connected to statutory language until 2021. As you know, the provision for character was pulled out of our statutory provision back in 2021. A view to conserving the value of properties needs to be considered in the context of the exception of zoning in the 1920s and the fact that zoning was established to address the harsh conditions of the industrial city. We've come a long way since then. In fact, still being along with other provisions, other regulations have essentially mitigated those concerns related to those harsh conditions and ultimately the impacts of property values. On the right-hand side, there's a quote here from a researcher doing research into, you know, land use and property values and so forth. It says, "Local elected officials are frequently confronted with homeowners protesting the presence of new commercial development, especially if in nearby, if it is nearby, will lower the property values." This is the well-known NIMBY not let down to a syndrome. The NIMBY reaction occurs when regulatory provision is, regulatory provision is soft in developments ranging from seven-welling communities. in developments ranging from seven-point community stores to regional malls. Local homeowners make their claims of a threatened property value, of threatened property values, arguing that everyone knows it is true. Local officials are confronted with difficult choices and little empirical information. Next slide. So the perceptions of negative impacts, the perceptions are real, the impacts are not. Negative impacts to adjacent properties have been mostly reduced to the most undesirable uses. That is, the research shows time and time again that airports, landfills, refineries, super fund sites, and other noxious such uses can have and often do have negative impacts. I think it's important to know that the site, the proposed site for the development is within one mile of the airport. It is off the main runway to Port Est, off the end to the west. And it is also within about a mile and a half of the Crosswind runway, V3 and 15. So we are very proximate of all these properties, whether it's the subject site of surrounding properties, are very proximate to an actual locally unwanted land use. Academic research on the impact of the similar uses, whether it be commercial, industrial, residential, has consistently found either positive impacts, no negative impacts, very elusive findings. Over my 30 years of being a land use as a municipal planner, dealing with hundreds of applications, as a consultant to municipalities, sitting by the side of the commission assisting them through applications like this, and in my role of working with developers themselves on proposed applications, I have not come across a circumstance with a negatively impacted surrounding property that I've actually never been aware of where, after the fact, of something being approved and developed, someone has actually come back and complained as such. So Georgia State University did a large study, did a large study related to, a comparative analysis related to 1.5 million residential property sales, both proximate in distance to new commercial development between 2006 and 2014 in metropolitan Portland. The study itself evaluated three categories of commercial development: industrial office and retail. The findings on the industrial development were that properties in close proximity to industrial development sites can experience a localized contraction in house prices during the pre-development period. Yet, the existing trend in property values is largely unaffected in the period following the industrial development completion. The pre-development period that's being referenced there is this point in time now. At the moment in time, when it's getting all the attention and everyone's up in arms about the proposed development, is when the most likely threat for, in fact, unvalued occurs. Once developed and absorbed into the neighborhood, then things return into the way they were. Next slide. This is not the first and only industrial development proposed. This is actually a map of the industrial warehouse distribution facilities of 200,000 square feet or more in the greater Hartford region. As you see, there's dozens of, dozens of them. The highest concentration of the plus three is actually approximately to where? Bradley Airport. Makes perfect sense. Makes sense for a lot of reasons. Access to the airport, 91, and the airport being the way between the Springfield marketplace and Hartford marketplace. The northern Hartford market makes a lot of sense. Next slide. So you have a, I believe in your hands, I see some of your hands, you have a 67-page report, which includes all these sections. So that was the property value section. Now we're going to look at the market research section. I just want to make you aware, there's a lot of slides or pages in that section, and there's a lot of slides in my slide deck here. If you could go to the next one. I do not intend, in the interest of time, to speak to the market research in great detail. But I'm presenting the slides that I will flip through just to show the functionality of research that was done. So we started out at a regional scale, the 38 communities that make up the capital region. And we analyzed the industrial market at that scale. Research performed. We also did a local scale, which I'll get to. The primary aim was to determine market feasibility and financial feasibility. So this research included inventory by year bill, inventory by rentable building area, net rent growth, or triple net rent growth, lease activity, absorption, delivery and vacancy. So, next slide, please. You can see a graphic handling each one of those bullets that I just went through there. The year bill, the rentable building area, net, rent growth, lease activity trends in that absorption, delivery and vacancy. Next slide. We did this again at a localized area. We essentially identified Bloomfield, East Granby, East Windsor, Enfield, Granby, Simsbury, and Summers as the localized research market area. And once again, we went through the same level of detail. Next slide. Categorizing everything that was going on in the market. We also did this, we also looked at more detailed data over a long time. Next slide. Over a longer period of time. And next slide. I'm sorry, fading it out on me. Next slide. Next slide. We then, sorry, next slide. We went through retail, industrial flex, which brings into the potential for land manufacturing as part of the use, which is outlined in the application. So not only the distribution warehouse that we looked at, also the flex. So, next slide. And then ultimately the flex on the localized market. Next slide. And next slide. Next slide. And next slide. Sorry, one more. There we are. So essentially, we looked at the last five years of 200,000 square feet or more in the industrial flex property categories. Seven existing developments met the right parameters for 3 million square feet and one project of 250,000 square feet currently under construction. In addition, there were 11 approved projects spanning approvals from recent years of 5.1 million square feet. Finally, two projects at the regional level that are in the entitlement process totaling about 600,000 square feet. In the Crogue region, a total of 28 qualifying sales. We evaluated 4 million square feet in total. Sales price averaged around $77 per square foot. The flex, they were higher. There were four sales at about $90 a square foot. We then looked at the local area and basically sales, 14 sales at $83 a square foot. That's on the warehouse distribution. And there was only one flex deal and the value was undisclosed in that category. In general, the data, every time, every one of those points, looking at all those graphs, I skip through quickly. The market for Central Connecticut is relatively strong comparatively over the past probably three decades. The industrial market was pretty flat in the 1990s all the way up until probably about 2012 or so, as we started to recover up the 2008, 2009, 2010 period. And then really started to gain some steam around 2020 and the pandemic boom in demand that came into play. Next slide. So we also did a fiscal, we also did a fiscal analysis. And all of that market research was kind of leading up to the fiscal analysis. And was the data that we were getting based on demand, based on property values, based on lease levels in activity, was it justifying the proposed development? So we always ask our clients to provide us with their pro forma, their numbers, what it's going to cost them to do the development. And then we test it, one against industrial software, an industry software that allows us to estimate, do the construction estimates on a development project, and also compare it to recent developments that we've been involved in, that we've advised on. And we look at land costs, we look at soft costs and financial costs, and then we do a deep dive into the hard construction costs. The hard construction costs, we came up with a just shy of $73 million or $104 per square foot, compared to our client, the applicant's, you know, numbers that were around $70 million for the development at about $100 a square foot. That variation is insignificant. It's typical that it's going to be a difference. Ultimately, we went with our numbers. We also tested the rent assumptions of $11 a square foot. The local market, those nine communities command a higher rate than the reasonable market overall. And we also consulted with industry professionals who said the $11 a square foot assumption on rents was reasonable and is what's being commanded for new product in the market. Next slide.
So Bobby, is it a that-that number?
I believe so. I'd have to go back to the report and double check that on top. I had a good guess. Sorry, I'm just using my own, I want to make sure we're in the same place. Next slide. Sorry, that's the fly. So then we use that to build out the fiscal analysis. Our fiscal analysis basically look at your budget and then ultimately taxes, cost of services, and impacts municipality. Your total budget is 28 million plus dollars a year. It's important to note that almost 21 million or 74% of the town's budget is in education. Commercial industrial development does not impact the more than that side of the budget. So general government services, debt service, capital reserve funds, total out of about 26% of your total budget. And that's the side of the budget that then we base our calculations on. It's about $7.4 million. Next slide. So we use the construction cost method to evaluate the property. And that is just shy of $73 million. That becomes the appraised or the market value. And then the assessed value is 70% of, which drops it down to about $51 million. Apply to town's mill rate and we would estimate that real property tax, real property taxes per year at the current mill rate would be about $1.5 million. For personal property taxes, unspent buildings are really hard to estimate. We don't know a tenant, we don't know a kid. Doing the work energy, going through this all the time, going through town's budget documents, their financial statements, their budgets, in general, personal property taxes run around 10% of real estate taxes. Sometimes we see them pushed higher to 14, 16% in giving municipalities, but 10% is a pretty safe number. That being said, they could be higher. When you look at something like the Amazon facility with a lot of technology inside, then you could be seeing personal property taxes that push out 40, 50, 60% of the real estate values. But being conservative, we use the 10%, another 155,000. So total personal and real property taxes would be about 1.7 million. Put that in context, that's approximately 6% of the town's entire budget, the 28 million. Next slide. We assume general government services in the narrative I taught of. This ties back to a study that was done by CCM and others that assumes that approximately 26% of the total real property taxes. Assuming general government service expenditures account for about 26% total real property taxes. That's based on our numbers that's consistent with the CCM study referenced in the report. That totals about 400,000. So when you subtract that from the 1.7 million, you end up in that fiscal positive of about 1.3 million. There's also one-time development fees that be building permits in this process right now, the previous wetlands and sewer connections and so forth. And ultimately, probably about 628,000 in one-time development fees. So that's the fiscal impact of it. We did a look at, sorry, I thought that was done. Economic impact analysis, we looked at job creation, construction jobs versus permanent jobs. And once again, using the industry estimates based on cost of construction for the construction jobs, using industry estimates on the number of employees per square foot. Once again, depending on who the tenant really drives it. I've seen on industrial properties where more processing activity takes place, where numbers can be one employee to about 1,600 square feet of space. I've seen them in very high-tech facilities be as low as one employee for about 10,000 square feet of space. We're using the number of one employee to 6,000 square feet of space. We believe it's conservative and it results in about 116 full-time permanent equivalent positions. We also assume some creation in the marketplace.
City had one full-time equivalent.
Estimate, we also made some, just an estimate of some truck driving jobs that would be created in the marketplace overall. So we added about 80 construction jobs, 95 industrial warehouse jobs, about 21 management level jobs within the warehouses, and about 50 truck driving jobs. In total, about 8.5 million in annual wealth creation using Bureau of Labor Statistics data, wages in those specific classifications of jobs. So with that, I will end here. I think you have to go back for traffic and you guys will get to see me again for land use. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I appreciate the report. I can give you a real simple question. I'm just curious. Was this report prepared on behalf of the applicant? This is part of the applicant's application?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And there was no involvement by any of the employees by Goman and York that worked for the Town of East Granby, correct?
There was what?
There was no involvement by any of the employees that are doing, of Goman and York that are doing work for the Town of East Granby presently?
No, no.
Sufficient Chinese walls in Goman and York to make sure that there's no conflict with anybody that's doing work for the Town of East Granby and doing work on behalf of the applicant, correct?
It's been over a year, a year and a half since Goman and York did any work for the Town of East Granby.
Are your employees presently working for the Town of East Granby?
Not that I am aware of.
Goman and York, aren't they undertaking to do plant expansion development?
I do not believe so.
Are you no longer working for Goman and York?
I've never worked for Goman and York.
I believe your plan of works for, I agree.
Do I apologize? You were very good before.
Thank you.
And the only, the only thing I might differ on is the construction jobs obviously disappeared. Year and a half, two years?
Yeah, and I mean, that's clearly stated in the report that they are not recurring after the construction period.
And I will state since I know that I agree with your assumption, depends on what you have in terms of personal property, who your tenant, or who your, you know, whether it's tenant or whether it's owner occupied. People are aware of Walgreens around the corner. It's been there for years. And when it was going up, it wasn't the real property assessment and taxes. It was the bonus to the Town of Windsor. It was, in fact, mechanized distribution and then development center. Places, it's, it's more than 60% at that time, it's 40%.
Yes, I was just.
I appreciate your comment, Tony.
Just related to it, I mean, I gave a presentation for the capital region and economic development program about two years ago. And when I presented on the personal property side of it, someone involved with the Town of Windsor came to me after the fact and was like, "You really need to adjust your numbers because when it's high-tech, they go through the roof." So, thank you, sir. I'll be back up in a bit. We're going to take a brief recess and. We're gonna take a brief, uh, recess and. So, that question related to the south corner. I think he's trying, he's making that assumption.
Yeah. It's very clear. So, that section of the rights of residential and agriculture. It's agriculture, you just come first there, the purpose statement is agriculture, now residential. So, like every day, it's agriculture, though, and then that provision clearly states residential. Yeah.
Yes, it does specifically say residential. That's how it's got a tight grammar, got the property makes a theme by building A.
That was a specific. With him to the rest.
It's not agriculture or, uh, it's. It's a turn.
It's not a store, it was a friend's store. It wasn't, it doesn't seem to favor essentials, so it never.
It was kind of there way years ago. I'm saying, we don't want to pick stuff that is, because it has the budget, so we're gonna call it.
Yeah.
We want it strong, and your last piece on menus is exactly what we need. And if you're up there too long, though. It'll stop anytime soon. Can we break it up in sequence? It's, uh, you know, different personality, different something.
Busy as ever.
Yeah, um. Working on the infield square. Remember that, that we filed our rezone application, did two, uh, pre-application meetings. The first one, we sat five, almost ten hours. They gave us ten minutes to present, and there goes. What are we supposed to do? So, we came back last week. They liked it more. We still want some. The tough part is if you remember, some of the developers not going to be. It's the master developer, but it's like the master plan doesn't have a lot of detail here to put forward because we're just trying to sum this up. So, we're trying to do the best that we can and it's just a ton of stuff. So, we're in the rezone right now, and then they want to subdivide it so it also require. And if they do any development applications at all, so we might be wanting to.
Is it my line to ask you guys a question at a recess later?
Uh, sure, or after the meeting, whatever.
Do you, you know, in the movies?
I've never been here before and I know nothing about anybody. But I thought it was odd that I googled all these guys. David works for you. And you are.
Is that a conflict of interest?
I don't know.
I'll bring it up when it comes to the, to the meeting. I just wanted to confirm that. Because it didn't say it was on his LinkedIn and it was on your slide for the, I looked at it for forty-five minutes and.
Great presentation, right?
It was a great presentation. It was good. But I just, I was looking for like, just the obvious thing that I was trying to look at. But anyways.
What's your name?
My name is Andrew.
That's me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, nice to meet you. I just, as a resident, I, I, I wanted to get, see what all the hubbub was about.
Hopefully it's all good.
So, it's a grand thing out.
They asked, oh. Makes number four. My career is cross. First and foremost, back in.
Yeah, yeah. I had a project that went through, yeah, three, four months of all, I mean, really split with. So, yeah, no, it's.
On Helmsford.
Okay, uh, alright. There's a delivery station and there's also the.
He's still mostly retired, so, you know.
Yeah. But he can't. He's still thinking of, like, if he was.
He probably did, yeah.
I think we were here with.
I did, uh.
His daughter. We did a joint proposal with the guys.
Yeah.
She was there.
So, it was the first time.
His office is still there.
Are you guys still in the train station though?
No, no, so we're at, uh, we're at Seventh. Which is the old, uh, park for truck company.
Right.
Right across from.
Right, right.
The Russell Building across from.
Shows how many years ago it was.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I mean. You tell stories about like. Like, I think it's kind of like. Guy plays, people like drawing, breaking cars.
The, uh, the train station is. I don't think it was there.
It may have been there.
The organization, I was really looking at occupying space like. And, uh, actually to access, you had to go. You go down to get in the doorway.
Yeah.
I was thinking. Enough on that. I didn't want to put. Obviously, it's.
No, I mean, I'm happy to have you on, I think, based on what I'm hearing so far.
I think that'd be helpful to tailor it.
If you do a victim, I would ask that, and I'm sorry to say one time, right, but I'm happy. And I don't know like how well I'm gonna do leaving stuff and I don't know for how long, so.
You'd be carrying these, uh, hundred.
At this point, I'm like.
If I knew, I would have carried.
Make it if it works. Go with it. Um, so if you have like nine, like Monday or Wednesday. Have you done some bond?
I'll make time. Let me know what's free.
I'm pretty flexible Mondays and Wednesdays. I work, um, so I focus on.
Hey, we're back in session, everyone. Time to see. Lights out, we're back in session.
Yes. Thank you.
Covering up.
For the record, my name is Scott Heskett. I'm the traffic engineer for A Heskett and Associates. Uh, our office in, uh, Granby, Connecticut, actually, Berkeley, Granby, right across the street here, actually. Um, I'm the author of the August seventh traffic impact report that's submitted in support of this application. We were asked to take a look at the site-generated traffic and the impact of this proposed development and present a report to your commission and also to the Office of the State Traffic Administration. In order to do our work and research the files of the Connecticut Department of Transportation, uh, the DOT had, uh, traffic volume counts out on Route twenty, conducted during October of twenty twenty-two, uh, just east of, east Main Street. They recorded the average daily traffic volume of eighteen thousand five hundred vehicles, a morning peak hour of thirteen hundred ninety-five vehicles, and an afternoon peak hour of seventeen hundred two vehicles. In addition, our office arranged for the conduct of manual turnie movement counts at seven intersections along Route twenty from the intersection of International Drive to the intersection of Route one eighty-seven. Those counts were conducted during July of twenty twenty-five and they were conducted during the morning and afternoon peak commuter periods because the proposed development, uh, is industrial-type development and our site-generated traffic is most condensed during those periods. We used those two sets of data to develop background traffic volume for, uh, the study area in review of, uh, DOT counts. It, uh, was apparent that the traffic volume counts had remained steady over the years. To be conservative, we used a one percent per year growth rate to a design year of twenty twenty-seven. So, the traffic volumes were once balanced between intersections and increased two percent to a design year of twenty twenty-seven. We researched the files of the town and the Office of the State Traffic Administration to see if there are any other developments that this town had reviewed and approved, which were under construction or not yet fully open and operational, which might develop traffic through the study area. We identified several developments, including the Bramble, Bramble brush development. There is apartment complex on Nicholson Road, uh, two warehouse developments, one on Russell Road and one on Stone Road in the town of Windsor. We took the traffic volumes for those particular developments, uh, where we could find turning movement diagrams or traffic reports for those developments. Where we couldn't find it, we generated the traffic ourselves, distributed it through the local roadway network and added it to the background traffic volumes. So, we're pretty confident that we're including most of the traffic for, uh, other developments in town, which may impact these particular areas. In terms of the development itself, we're proposing again a warehouse development of about seven hundred thousand square feet. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report, a seven hundred thousand square foot warehouse development, we're having trip generation of approximately one hundred nineteen trips during the morning peak hour and one hundred and twenty-six trips during the afternoon peak hour. The ITE also indicates to us that included within those volumes would be fourteen truck trips during the morning peak hour and twenty-one truck trips during the afternoon peak hour. As you've heard, uh, as I assume you've heard, because I wasn't here for the first part of the meeting, uh, the development not only is a warehouse, but it's potential for manufacturing or some other industrial uses in a portion of the development. Because manufacturing or, uh, manufacturing is a higher trip generation potential per square foot and there's a potential that part of this development would be utilized as such, we reviewed the site plans and, you know, we think that we could provide enough parking on site for about two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of manufacture. You might have heard a lower number earlier this evening, uh, based on the site plan, but from a traffic standpoint, we want to be conservative in our estimates. So, we're assuming two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of manufacturing and four hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of warehouse space, which according to the ITE would raise the trip generation to two hundred and thirty-four trips during the morning peak hour and two hundred and sixty-four trips during the afternoon peak hour. The theory being then if we can accommodate this volume of traffic, if it's all warehouse use or a smaller portion of manufacturing, then we should be good and everything should operate better than, than what we presented. I'd say.
Is that, is that part of that commuter site, um, commuter traffic to the site during those peak hours?
That's also a challenge question?
So, we saw earlier that there would be X number of employees, some question, uh, during those peak hours. Is part of that traffic going to the site is part of that commuter employee traffic? Or is this, or is this just what you're projecting actual, um, trailer or other, um, people traffic?
That's all we are.
I'm trying to distinguish whether or not that there's an influx or any noticeable, just plain old commuter traffic to.
Well, commuter traffic is included, gave you your number.
The employees going to this track. He gave us an increase in traffic for the site. I'm just curious. What part of that?
Well, people going to the site will include employees, deliveries.
Dogs, visitors.
Just to know that it's not garbage trucks, mail trucks.
There you go.
And the like, yes. It's all included in the number.
Good. Wait, just for clarification, because the way that it's outlined in the text, it says trucks. So, does that, or does that not include like people who are working at the warehouse, meaning to commute to the warehouse? Does that include those numbers or does it include just the trucks that are going in and out of the little thing?
Well, I'm not sure if you're looking, because in the parts reported, there are two trucks and then two, like, all traffic.
Okay. The, the trip generation estimates, which we are presenting, include anybody who drives to and from the development for any purpose whatsoever in any type of vehicle during the morning or afternoon peak hours. So, if there were employee driving in and picking up a truck and then leaving, that would be two trips. In the afternoon, the truck would return and the employee would leave. That would be two trips.
I think that's it.
Okay. We just want to make sure that it's clear so that everyone has the same understanding of what's going on. Okay. So, in terms of the site-generated traffic, we distributed, we distributed that in the local roadway network. Basically, with seventy-five percent to and from the east along Route twenty to access Interstate ninety-one and twenty-five percent of the traffic to and from the west, uh, on Route twenty. And that traffic would distribute itself along East Street, Route one eighty-seven, and continue on Route twenty to, uh, to Granby and other towns. Distributed that traffic, and you'll see that all the figures of that traffic is included in the, in the report. We conducted capacity analysis calculations at the seven intersections that, uh, that we had done counts. We did, uh, capacity analyses for both the background and combined conditions for the morning and afternoon peak hours. And the results of the analysis are presented in table four in our report. And I think we have the. That's our, that's our provisional distribution that we use for the development. It gave a seventy-five percent to and from the east, twenty-five percent to and from the west. Okay, we've got, as you see from the site plan, we have two side driveways, both of them to Connecticut South Drive, one which is basically an extension of Connecticut South Drive and one which intersects Connecticut South Drive in the midpoint. We distributed the traffic for the two different buildings and the two different driveways and depending on where they're oriented to. And depending on where they're oriented to, we've got different distribution percentages to and from. As you can see, we've got, um, there currently is no signal at Gateway Boulevard, so we protected some of the left-turning traffic on Route 20 over to Hazelwood Road because it would be much easier to do so in these, under the existing conditions. In any event, if we go to the next slide, we should have table four. This is their representation. Uh, the level of service, I know there's a lot of numbers on the table, um, but I've got to calculate them and I've got to present it to you. Um, basically, the numbers indicate that all the intersections, uh, along Route 20 operate at, at good levels of service. Um, again, intersection of Route 20 and International Drive operates at level service B as in boy in the morning peak hour, will continue to do so after this development. That intersection operates at level service C in the afternoon, will continue to operate at C in the combined conditions. Route 20 and Hazelwood Road operates at levels of service A or B during peak hours. Um, Kreis Road operates at level service A during peak hours. Route 20 and Gateway Boulevard is a, is a different situation, we'll come back to that one. Route 20 and East Street and the retail driveway, intersection operates at level service C. The background conditions will continue to be C in the combined conditions. Route 20 and Route 187 operates at level service C during the morning peak hour under both conditions. Operates at level service D in the background conditions in the afternoon. With the addition of the site-generated traffic, it'll drop to a level service E, but the increase in delay there is about four seconds per vehicle. Now, the intersection at Route 20, Gateway Boulevard, again, is an unsignalized intersection. Um, and that intersection operates with the northbound approach on Gateways, level service F during peak hours, because you just can't make a left-hand turn at that location. Uh, I should mention in our analysis, the StubHub building, which is currently vacant, we assumed that to be full. I forgot to mention that previously. We put all the site-generated traffic for that building in the background conditions and analyzed that because, well, they could sign a lease tomorrow and they could fill that one up. So at that intersection, the Route 20 movements all operate at level service A. Uh, the Gateway Boulevard approach is on level service F, meaning that delays are in excess of 60 seconds per vehicle. And that makes sense because if you're trying to make a left-hand turn out of there, it's very difficult during, during peak hours. And the other intersection that we did look at was Route 20 and School Street. And again, the levels of service represented here on the table, Route 20 movements are level service A, coming on School Street can be difficult, but mostly right turns at that location, because if you're going to make a left-hand turn, you did so somewhere else. Uh, but the town has plans to reconstruct and relocate School Street to, to come through the retail plaza. Um, so we won't have an impact on that particular location. It does, that's kind of, we'll get back to that in a moment, so. So in terms of, uh, proposals, because the intersection of Gateway, Route 20 and Gateway Boulevard operates at a level service F, both in the background and combined conditions, we believe it should be necessary to provide a traffic signal at that location, which would allow, uh, people not only in the existing industrial development, but the employees of the, of this development to safely execute a left-hand turn out of that, uh, intersection onto Route 20 if they desire to do so. In order to accommodate that, Gateway Boulevard would have to be widened to a two-lane approach on Route 20, so one right turn lane, one left turn lane. And Route 20 would be widened to a left-hand turn in the westbound direction. Now, I, it's my understanding there may be other developments which have come to late, uh, at that location. So we haven't prepared any plans for that because there's another property owner looking to do other, uh, development in that location. And we've opened discussions with the town staff and Department of Transportation to try to come up with a plan which would be most appropriate to service the, probably the existing properties, but there's two vacant properties in that intersection which would desire to have access, uh, through a signalized intersection at that location. So, uh, what that looks like would be under, uh, part of a negotiation between the two developers and the state and the town to, to see what that looks like. But we believe a traffic signal at that location would be appropriate to accommodate the traffic for this development. And.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the, um, the intersection?
It's the gateway.
Gateway.
Yes. Now, the, the next table.
I'm sorry, in, in one more. Sure. Is there a way that we could be looking to funnel traffic? Minimize the traffic on Gateway and move it to Hazelwood? Is Hazelwood able, is Hazelwood able to handle some of the traffic that would be generated?
If there was no traffic signal at the intersection of Gateway, all of this site traffic had to go down to Hazelwood, I, I believe you could accommodate that. No, because it's, because it's signalized and there is a two-lane approach to that location, uh, it, it, we should have levels of service, uh, at least on the side street approach, probably C or D on the side street approach.
That was humor, folks.
Yeah, I appreciate it. If you go to the next table here, you'll see the results of the levels of service calculations for Route 20 and Gateway Boulevard with that signal in place. Uh, the overall intersection goes to a level service, uh, A or B. And below it, uh, because we know that the town is going to relocate, uh, School Street, uh, we analyze the intersection of School Street with the traffic being rerouted in that direction for both, uh, the, uh, morning and afternoon peak hours under the combined conditions. And that intersection operates at level service C, so, so that should be, uh, excellent level of service at that location with that, with that relocation.
That was a good plan, still around that building?
Uh, I, I have seen plans which show School Street getting wrapped around the back of the retail building and, and coming out opposite East Street where the, well, the existing driveway is. That's my understanding. How far that's gone, I, I can't tell you, but, but that's the plan I stated at least. Sure. Now, I know that, um, town staff and the public is concerned about volume of traffic and, uh, trucks going to and from this development. Obviously, where trucks come from and go to would be dependent on a particular user of, of the building. But, uh, the idea behind this particular development, if you go back to that perhaps, and then just as a visual reference. Yes. Yeah, that's right. Obviously, the facility is located on Route 20, a state highway, or just on Route 20 on a state highway. Um, access to that highway by Gateway Boulevard, uh, Connecticut South Boulevard and Hazelwood Road, which are all town roadways, but industrial town roadways. Uh, Route 20 provides easy access to Interstate 91 to and from the east. Um, traffic heading to and from the west would most likely utilize Route 20 and/or Route 187, depending on where they're oriented to. Um, most of the world is accessible by Interstate 91, except perhaps the northeast corner of the state of Connecticut, which, immediately, Route 20 and 187 provides access to that. Potential for some traffic on East Street, uh, if one is to make a, uh, a journey in that direction. But you really can't go too far in that direction. That I, I-91 doesn't, uh, provides you an easy access to from a trucking standpoint. Um, unless you're headed to Bluefield, Sitsbury, Grand Bay, or maybe, you know, um, one or two of those, uh, border towns in Massachusetts, you're most likely going to be utilizing Route 20 to Interstate 91. And we believe that most of the traffic, again, if this happens to be a, uh, a user which has facilities on one of those roadways or one of those towns in that immediate area, there may be some truck traffic in that direction, but it would be our intention to, to have the user utilize the state highways, um, as much as possible. And we believe that a significant proportion, 85 to 90%, of it will be utilizing Interstate 91 for, for routing. Now, if this commission decides to create a site on approval for this development, we will be, so we are submitting it to the Office of the State Traffic Administration. Uh, they are the state agency which has jurisdiction over the relevance in excess of 100,000 square feet or 200 parking spaces. It's their job to review the traffic impacts, uh, to state highways, uh, and, and to make sure that the facilities are operating safely. Um, the process is a three-step process. We are soon to be making the step one application, which is approval of traffic volumes. That's the first thing they like to do, review and prove the traffic volumes to make sure that all the analysis you do afterwards is, is based on the correct volumes. However, we've already presented all of that to the, to the town. You have to make an application to the town before you can submit to them, so it's kind of somewhat backwards, but that's all right. Um, so we've been making that application as well. I think in terms of traffic, that's all I really wanted to say. Um, if the commission has any specific questions related to traffic, I'd be happy to address them. And I'll be released for the rest of the, rest of tonight's hearing and, if the Lord will, we come back again. The whole of the next one, so. Thank you. I guess I'm going to hand this over to Don Poland to, around to.
Thank you, uh, once again, for the record, Don Poland, Bill Newhart. And next slide, please. So this section of this presentation is specifically for land use. Uh, touching on primarily the 11 considerations under the special permit requirements, along with that I will touch on some wider stuff around land use. Uh, so as you know, 133 acre sites, you know the location, I'll skip over that. The zoning is primarily the CPT zone, uh, with a little bit of, uh, of the commercial parkage zone. Uh, under the CPT, as was stated previously, but stated again via special permit uses, light manufacturing, fabrication, processing, warehouses and distribution centers are permissible uses. They are allowed, they are conceptualized, uh, and specifically light manufacturing, warehousing and distribution centers. Uh, from a land use perspective, also just the consideration of Route 20, uh, and looking at the ADTs, I know you had the full traffic presentation, but you're talking about man arterial with, you know, 20-plus thousand vehicles per day, a room that is suitable or desirable for this kind of use. And 2014 POCD, planning conservation and development, the future land use plan designated the site as a business park with some areas as environmentally destroying, which are essentially the wetland areas that are being addressed in the site plan process. Next slide, just a quick look at some of the ADTs and recognizing that 20-plus thousand, uh, in the intersections closest to this site. Next slide. So this is my analysis from a land use perspective, looking at the area. Areas to the northeast of the site are commercial and industrial. The commercial industrial character is due to the front of that Route 20 and the commercial industrial uses to the east. The site is accessible for, uh, site access is provided through Connecticut South Drive, which is also a commercial industrial area. So at the end of the day, while I will recognize the west side of it next, this site, its access and so forth, is orientated in the direction of all that existing commercial industrial use, pushing all the way up into Bradley Airport itself. The west side of the site is residential, separated by, uh, by Sheldon Brook, the wetlands, the water course and the flood zone there. At the north end on the west side of the northwest portion of the site, uh, near School Street, it is Schoolhouse Landing, a planned unit style multifamily development. It's far north on the site, and as we've talked about, this proposed development is, uh, at the furthest southern point or most southernly point of the site. Next, moving down, uh, south of Schools, Schoolhouse Landing is, uh, Igley Village, a senior housing development, also far to the north or more northern than the proposed site development. Next is Sanford Ridge, a planned multifamily development with single-family detached units. Next slide. And Sanford Ridge, at the end of the day, is the residential property that is nearest to proposed development, specifically Building B, which is the more northern of the two buildings. Between Building B and Sanford Ridge is Sheldon Brook and the associated wetlands. Sanford Ridge is separated from Sheldon Brook by wooded areas of mature trees that start on the properties in Sanford Ridge. Sheldon Brook Wetlands are approximately 300 foot wide, and that's me taking a measurement just in kind of a random location, wider in some areas, maybe there or on other areas. The nearest, uh, the nearest residence in Sanford Ridge is approximately 840 feet, uh, from Building B, and that's a measurement off of the civil plans, uh, submitted. Building B is approximately 500 feet from the Sanford Ridge property lines and the MFTR zone boundary. They're both the same location, the property lines and the boundaries, uh, zone boundary match. And Building A is approximately 875 feet from the multifamily TR zone boundary, uh, which is that zone that residential exists within. The design of Building B is sensitive to the residential area. There are no living docks on the west side of Building B. This is important since it is the building that is closest to the residential, uh, uses. Building B's west side is designed for employee parking and truck circulation is rotated from this area in the site design. Next slide. Further south is then ultimately, south of Sanford Ridge is the Grand Bay Middle High School campus, proposed Building A. Building A is proposed opposite this site, that is the site with cross-docking, so that is building cross-docking facilities. Sheldon Brook and the wetlands do provide ample distance between, uh, Building A and the campus ball fields, and then there is a greater distance to the actual school building. And Building A has living docks on both sides, as I already said. Next slide. So in general, we have a site that's, as, you know, just going through, that's really characterized and oriented towards the industrial uses to the east and northeast. Uh, and it's in recognition of, uh, the institutional and residential uses to the west side. From a zoning perspective, when we're talking about special permit application, I just want to get through some basic, uh, zoning fundamentals. Zoning authority is granted in section that's to the general statutes. Basically, the state authorized municipalities to engage in zoning. And it basically provides kind of a recipe that tells the zoning commission, uh, what the town shall make and shall not regulate through the zoning regulations. So it gives you a lot of lists of what you can and cannot do. Uh, zoning is a police power, uh, authority. The authority of government to protect public health, safety, welfare. And zoning specifically regulates bulked area, that's your height, number of stories, setbacks, percentage of coverage, type of stuff, that's the bulked area, dimensional requirement. And then use, location and use of building structures and land for trade, industry, residence and public purposes. Zoning further allows the regulations, uh, to provide for certain classes or kinds of building structures or land uses. Uh, uses of land are permitted only after obtaining a special permit from the zoning commission, subject to standards set forth in the regulations and to conditions necessary to protect public health, safety, convenience and property values. So essentially, that is that provision, that carve-out that allows the special permit process and allows you guys to set forth standards within your regulations, uh, which I will be addressing tonight. As stated by your town attorney earlier tonight, but I want to repeat it. Next slide, please. Uh, when considering a special permit, uh, when considering special permit use, the zoning commission acts in administrative capacity for administrative agency to approve a special permit and must determine that, one, the proposed use of the property is expressly permitted under the zoning regulations. Number two, that the standards in the regulations are satisfied. And number three, that any conditions necessary to protect public health, safety. Convenience and property value can be established. This establishes essentially a three-part determination for this approval. This establishes essentially a three-part determination for this approval. The first is to determine the purpose of proposed use is expressly permitted under the zoning regulations. We've already said that multiple times, I'll say it again though, but the warehouses and distribution center and the light manufacturing uses are expressly permitted in Section V dot D dot four, special permit uses subsection C for buildings up to 400,000 square feet. So, one down, two to go. Unfortunately, you guys set forward 11 criterion for consideration to make the number two decision. So don't blame me as I go through these 11, I'm just following what your regulations said. So the second determination, if the standards of the regulations are satisfied. So you guys go forth with 11 standards in Section 8, special permit considerations, and if the applicant can demonstrate compliance with the considerations, the applicant application must be approved, going back to the idea that this is a free of approval. So each of these slides, I have emboldened, oh, next slide, sorry. I have emboldened up top the primary heading, suitable location for use. I then have your actual language from the regulations in small text, just so that it's available. I don't expect everyone to be able to read it, and I am not going to read it. The bullets that then follow are my professional planning interpretation of compliance with that category and the language that you guys provided. So I just want to be clearing that, and I want you to read out like, what's the say up there? Why is that text small? It's just there for reference, so that you know that there's more than just that type of line. So suitable location for user activity. My interpretation, my professional opinion, the location and lot is located in the CPT zone with a small CPA. The zoning is suitable for this location, you know. The use is allowed and the proposed site plan complies with the requirements of the lot size. So lot size complies, zoning complies, and both buildings comply with 400 square foot, 400,000 square foot maximum. Site plan complies with the bulked area requirements. The maximum lot coverage allows up to 65%. We don't exceed 28.3% in the design, and access is proposed through the existing commercial industrial areas I connected South Drive. So compatible uses are the area that's providing access into the site. The proposed development is set back in the site, distance from and naturally screened from residential and institutional uses, and the intensity in the context of size of the study is scaled. That is, that 28% of coverage, 28% of development in the context of this 133-acre site is scaled to it. Next slide, please. This, as you've seen previously, is the map showing the area, and I think from the land use perspective and the suitability of location, this is key. It shows the intensive commercial industrial use to the east, southeast and northeast of this site, that this site is essentially an extension of those existing commercial uses to that corridor. Next slide, please. Suitable structures, we already heard from our architects and the designs being in compliance with your regulations. From the land use perspective, the buildings are appropriate for the use and the activity and distance and distance from other structures and roads. They're not pushed up against other buildings affecting the design of other buildings or conflicting with them. The landscaping plan is appropriate for the use and the activity. The building placement will not hinder or discourage the appropriate use of adjoining property. Once again, nearest residential being over, being 840 feet away. And on multiples of these, I made the statement, development will not diminish the value of adjoining property, and that ties back to my earlier presentation, property value of that. So I won't go through that every time it comes up. Neighborhood compatibility. Designed in buildings fit with the site characteristics in the immediate area that's primarily speaking to the existing commercial industrial area, which it is most proximate to. The buildings are consistent with large industrial buildings south of the site and a long industrial drive in winter. This type of use is prevalent through that area. The industrial stock up here in East Grandview is a bit of an older stock and maybe a bit more orientated towards the light industrial and warehouse and distribution. The building location is distance from Rainbow Road and School Street and 840 feet from the nearest residence, greatly reducing impacts on surrounding areas of community, minimizing the physical and aesthetic impacts on the community. As those visual images showed previously, the inability to see these buildings from Route 20 minimizes the impact to the overall community. There are no public streets or public facilities, as stated in the requirements, so all maintenance is the responsibility of the property owners and civil, or civil engineers already discussed the defense and relationships of the pump stations and so forth and so on. But all onsite maintenance is that the responsibility of the property. Since early, since as early as 2004, that year 2004 POCD, this site was designated for commercial uses and these uses were allowed. The uses on the site will not adversely, no, it's a property value, won't yet. So item D, I believe we go as far as K, just for anticipation purposes. Suitable access and parking, building placements to the interior of the site and access from Connecticut South Drive mitigate negative impacts related to access. I think it's really important to note that no curb cuts are being added out on Route 20 from a planning perspective, that's important. You know, we're not adding that direct access into another site along that corridor, and once again, using the car, utilizing the car rental industrial area along Connecticut South Drive. With I-91, Grand International Airport to the east, as already stated by the traffic engineer, most of the trip generation will be to and from the east, limiting traffic impact to the greater community and truck traffic through the village center. Access from Connecticut South Drive, along with the interior site circulation, provide for safe and efficient movement on and off the site. I got ahead of myself, no new curb cuts on Rainbow Road. And the site design, the site, onsite parking is ample and designed to the standards and the zoning regulations to facilitate safe circulation patterns on the site. As shown here on circulation, sorry, next, yeah, next slide. No, you're good, that one. I mean, I made you jump right off it, but it's shown on the circulation plan from the site plan submitted. So then, next slide. I'm getting confused with my own slide. My fault, that is. Suitable streets for the user activities. The use, the site development and the access from Connecticut South Drive is the best alternative for this site. Accessing anywhere else would be more intrusive into the community. Site access will not negatively impact the town of East Grandview, particular circulation plan, which is contained in your 2014 POCD. I recognize you're in the process of updating your current POCD, but at the end of the day, the 2014 one is the one that's in effect at this point. Connecticut South Drive is designated as a collector road, and Rainbow Road is designated as an arterial. That makes perfect sense from accessibility, pick up the traffic off the collector and feed it into the arterial. The circulation plan states arterial roads are state highways that provide major regional needs, and collector roads serve secondary role in the regional traffic network. Once again, exactly what we're doing. And access on Connecticut South best utilizes the existing road network and avoids all local roads. So primarily putting traffic onto a collector and onto arterials, not onto roads designated as bulk. Next slide. So then, we get two for one here. Adequate emergency access. Access is provided by two ingress and egress points for emergency vehicles. We think that's critical from an emergency perspective, if something happens, that there is an alternative access way in. The interior circulation provides easy accessibility for emergency services, including 360-degree access to all sides of the buildings. So no side of the building is isolated from access as the site is designed. Adequate public utilities service the site, whether that be gas or public water and so forth, and that was already spoken to. And then the stormwater drainage system is designed to the 2023 Connecticut Stormwater Management Guidelines, so satisfies those requirements. Next slide. Environmental protection. Site design is sensitive to environmental conditions such as wetlands and protecting burnable pools. The proposed, the proposal received approval from the Wetlands Commission in August of 2025. Buildings and parking facilities are located and designed outside of the wetlands and water course and flood zone areas. Site is designed in accordance with stormwater guidelines as referenced previously. There's ample and adequate buffers, ample and adequate buffers that are provided in such sensitive areas, and once again, only utilizing, you know, for development, 28.3% of the site for impervious coverages. Next slide. Consistent with purpose, the proposed use and activity will not have any detrimental effect upon public health, safety, welfare, convenient property value. The use and uses does not conflict with the proposed zoning, the purpose of the zoning regulations. The proposed uses are expressly permitted in the CPT zone. The site plan complies with bulked area requirements, and the site plan complies with the zoning development standards, i.e. parking, landscaping, stormwater. Next slide. We're getting there. I think K is after J, right? So consistent with plan of development, the uses and activities are consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of 2014 POCD. That POCD recommended the creation of the Commerce Park Transitional Zone and provide for high flex, higher flexibility of uses that are currently allowed in the Commerce Park A zone. It also stated that the use proposed for development on this parcel, it's speaking specifically to this site in the POCD back in 2014, could either help support or inhibit development into the village center. Proposed use on this parcel should help anchor and attract development to the village center. As someone who's worked on the village center, I don't think this site or this proposed development would inhibit development in the village center. To be honest with you, as we talked about previously, adding a large employment base into the town will increase the daytime population, which would hopefully provide more vibrancy for businesses within the village center. So you have this catch-all, I have a kind of other considerations, and in that, the proposed use and activity addresses many of these considerations. Location of signs and lightings comply with the zoning regulations, and energy efficiency standards are addressed through the EV parking spaces. Buildings could accommodate solar power in the future, and safe and sufficient possession and circulation, handicap parking are provided within development. And last slide. All right, so the third, so we got through the second determination, and the proposed application complies with, complies with the standards set forth within the regulations. The third determination is that any conditions necessary to protect public health, safety, convenience and property values are provided, that Connecticut statutes can be established. So this analysis recognizes that reasonable conditions related to the special permit considerations may be requested by the planning zoning commission, and that such conditions would be consistent with zoning law. The proposed use and activity and the application for the special permit uses complies with the intent and purpose of the zoning district, special permit considerations, and can comply with reasonable considerations. And we know that your town planner has already been considering recommendations for some conditions of approval. So this report clearly demonstrates that the three-part determination has been met. The proposed use of the property is expressly permitted under the zoning regulations. The standards in the regulations, the 11 considerations that work in the regulations are satisfied, and that we can comply with reasonable conditions that call on health, safety, convenience and property value. And with that, I will rest, but I'm available if any of you have any questions or comments. Then I will rest. Thank you, gentlemen.
For the record, I'm Seaman Robinson Cole, and that concludes our initial presentation. We want to thank everyone for their time this evening. I think as you've heard from the members of our team, this project has been carefully thoughtfully designed. We've listened to the comments of some members of the commission and some members of the public over the years and have incorporated them into this project. Two smaller buildings consistent with the April 2022 text amendment approval, significant landscaping and buffers, access drives the east of the property near the commercial and industrial areas, and impervious coverage that falls significantly below the allowable limits. So with that, I believe the next item on your agenda are comments and questions from the commission, and we really appreciate any additional comments, questions or feedback, recognizing that this is going to be continued, so that we can take some time to prepare anything else for the next one. Thank you.
How long do you guys think construction will take?
We're going, sorry, we're going to fully decide how we're going to base it out. If we were to build both buildings concurrently on 16, 18 months, probably?
Okay. Then you probably start something, you did something that you would start in early '06, or do you wait for the ground to thaw and all that?
If this were to be improved, we'd, you know, evaluating the market, ideally start in spring sometime, give us the best, you know, season actually where the site works, especially with the amount of site work.
If you didn't do both buildings, you reference on which one you would build first, or is that depending on whatever deals you're working with?
It would be market dependent. We will have to, since the existing temporary here at the site, cut the 400 and fill to the, basically the remainder of the site.
You have here to put the roads in?
Correct.
And which area building you went with first? I'm assuming you can probably also do the pad for the second building?
Yes, correct.
Do you have any other plans for this site, looking out to the future? You guys cited that, you still have some property there, you know, heading towards the School Street. Do you have any other plans in mind?
Nothing as part of this application.
No, not as part of this application, but I mean, I, you know, I'm sort of thinking about the, what you had presented a couple of years ago, residential con, component, and a little bit of theater and things like that. Is that something that you're still considering, or is that?
It is under consideration, I would say.
I understand, not as part of this application.
In the next few years, you know, frankly, just to speak honestly, the population growth there is not significant enough where the residential makes sense.
Right, well, and currently, there are a bunch of residential buildings going up right now. And so that is approved, they don't go down, but yeah, we've got the duplex on the street, that part of the School Street, and I think there was a one, kind of a buddy. When you're doing something this, how long did it typically take you to find a tenant?
So, build, be very dependent on the state of the market, obviously, as we build it. I'll give an example. We are building, you know, much of locks right up Route 20 down the road that is partially leased, we're not completely constructing yet. So, you know, the hope obviously is it's leased before it's constructed, but it's not always the case.
Have you considered anything else on this property, or anybody? Or had anybody approached you with something else uh that would work on this property? I'm not asking you to change it, I'm just kind of curious.
We haven't, we haven't paid an approach with, you know, a few different ideas, but that that would say for now we're focused on warehouse and some sort of industrial component.
Are you, uh, ready to say what some of those other ideas are?
We were approached uh for basically studio use.
Was anybody presented to you, like, was a tenant presented to you or somebody that was interested in doing it? Uh that actually had the funds to put something in there?
Not a specific tenant, no.
No, no.
Nothing.
And you are, you're planning on probably still, you know, without, you're not, I know that that's too.
Correct, we're forbidden long term. Yes, we don't feel long term.
I don't really have a review over at Moore. Um if you guys know any like actual studies or analysis for the surrounding neighborhoods, I think probably the Sanford Bridge and Schoolhouse neighborhood probably want to know that.
Yep, absolutely. So obviously we have to comply with Connecticut State noise uh regulations. The town doesn't have their own order, so uh we have to comply with with the state regulations. Um so we'll do whatever it takes basically to to comply.
If nobody else has any questions, I would like a motion to continue uh here to our number 17. We still have, we still have some things to do. It's almost 10 o'clock and we technically have a hard colon at 10 o'clock. It's always 10, but I'm being hopeful, we can do it to get along with the patient. And that was state, you know, whatever. Um can I get a second on continuing to 17? Anyone?
Can we submit questions?
Sure.
If it's a legitimate question.
You can submit, yeah, you can submit questions, you can send them to me at all.
Could we send that to?
Send it to me.
Rob, sorry.
I'm the town planner, if you go on the planning and zoning site by email, it's late.
Okay, so there's like several things, and then I will, I will board them. Yes.
But does the answer only go in that?
I just want to know.
Yes. Do I need to go up here?
Yep. Yeah.
Hello, my name is Sandy Lynn Lena from Haiti New Gay Road. And I would like to ask that the communications be read into the record for this meeting. I didn't appear to have it at the beginning of this meeting, so I would ask Ms. Noonan to read the communications into the record.
Uh I have a motion to accept our uh minutes. Communications?
The communications, the zoning, the performance reports, we don't have any.
You don't have any zoning reports or reports?
And planning and performance, we don't have any. Any information related to the public hearing is an exhibit in the public hearing. Part of the record, it was handed out to the commission members and given to the applicant and prior for this meeting. They don't get read individually into the record. Um so they're not communications under the agenda. They are part of the public record for the public hearing. So can people access that?
Can the public access that tomorrow in your office?
Yes.
Terrific.
I don't think the people in the back can hear you.
We all need old business to tend to, the new business. Uh the new business, we are receiving two applications, uh P Z C 2511, which is special permit and site plan review for Rainbow Road Development LLC on One Gateway Boulevard. And that's for construction of an 1131 square foot retail building to include a type A drive-through establishment. Uh we received it and the public hearing is set for December 9th, 2025. We also received P Z C 2512, which is a special permit and site plan review for glossow materials, 60 South Main Street for quarry expansion. Received that application and uh the public hearing for that one is also set for December 9th.
Do we know how long glasso is currently developing products?
Um.
Like 2027?
Yeah, they're looking to do an expansion, so it their current purpose is for what they already have approval for and the expansion will be for an area.
Now, make a motion for adjourned. Favorite?